And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
First up on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I received only one meeting notice in the mail, which is the annual town meeting. We have not evidently got the special town meeting notice out yet. But on Article 12, fire station feasibility study, I did a little homework, and I'll give you these. If we keep studying to the tune of $80,000 a year and stuff like that, I'm looking at my book in the hell of a hurry. I think I might want to know why somebody hasn't done anything now or what have you, or unknown, and no action taken. I don't know. But anyway, I'm sorry I didn't make enough copies for the audience. I didn't expect a big crowd tonight.
Well, the only guys who would yell at you for that is handing out papers.
This was a special town meeting, mail, hold on, by the way. For your reference, I didn't put it on the figure bar there. But I thought it might be a good idea if somebody took a good look at this, because we're talking about doing something that has already been done, by estimation. And it seems like every time you turn around, we're spending more dough to do the same job and nothing happens.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Is he done?
Yeah.
Which one are you? You had Article 15 there or whatever?
Yes.
So, anyway, I would hope that somebody in their wisdom, the town government here, would do a little further research on this, because it really isn't a citizen's job to do it. But I find it rather odd that Article 12 says we're going to spend $90,000 for the purpose of undertaking study regarding the existing fire station and all that good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Anything, any other public comments?
Yes.
All right. I should point out that Selectman Gavin is not here tonight. He might be here later. It being a Wednesday, not a Tuesday, apparently he has a conflict with an event with one of his children. So perhaps he'll be here later. But number two on our agenda is the acceptance of minutes. And Jason, March 31, is still in action?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The other, the other two are, as in the packet?
I believe the other two were, all comments were referred to Becky, and those were made.
Okay. So the version of the packet stands?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have any comments on the minutes of April 7? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 7. Do we have a second?
Second.
We motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote for, nothing? Uh, anybody have any comments on the minutes of April 21? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 21. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes four zero. The minutes of March 31 are deferred till the next, the meeting on the 19th, next regular meeting. We have correspondence. I move to accept correspondence items A through R as listed on the agenda for May 6. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Very good. We have a consent agenda for a special permit for the Maynard Veterans Parade on May 25, a proclamation for a Girl Scout Gold Award Ceremony, and a special permit for a free concert at Memorial Park on August 4. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A, B, and C as printed in the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Next up on the agenda is item 5, 129 Parker Street Fiscal Impact Analysis. And, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Did we, just looking at the agenda I just picked up at the back of the room, are we missing a consent agenda item? Special permit Maynard Community Gardeners?
That was on the revised, updated agenda for 7:00 PM. I think you were looking at the agenda from the packet.
All right. Thank you.
If we could just motion item D.
Uh, yes. We'll do that as a standalone. I move to approve a special permit for the Maynard Community Gardeners for their plant sale on Saturday, May 6.
Nothing else changed?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Friendly amendment. I think that's 16.
16, huh? It is 16, yeah. That's not what it says there. All right. Sorry, May 16. And just confirm a second on that, May 16? All right. So you motion a second for the plant sale on Saturday, May 16. Further discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you. Got to be careful. All right. So, Agenda 5, the 129 Parker Street Fiscal Impact Analysis. That discussion has been deferred to our next regular meeting on March 19. The report is not quite ready, but it should be ready for review well before that meeting. Is that correct?
Correct, May 19.
May 19. Thank you. All right. I'll get it right. Okay. So we have a 7:15 hearing. What do you think, Kevin? What can we accomplish in six minutes?
DEP, the golf course? Golf course. They'll do the golf course approval.
All right. Well, let's, let's jump over to item, agenda item 12, the Maynard Golf Course Contract Approval.
Andrew, you want to talk about the changes you added into from the last meeting?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me, but all the changes that the board requested at our last meeting were incorporated into the new contract and agreed to by the golf course management company. And the final draft that they signed is in your packet, Bill.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. I have the signature copies here. Anybody want to peruse, or do you remember the discussion from last time?
I remember.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Maynard and Sterling Golf Management for the management of the Maynard Golf Course. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes four zero. All right. Give me a moment to sign a document. We'll get that out of the way. Two sets there, sir.
Yeah.
I didn't get the date right. Oh, we got to send it to...
It's just my signature.
It's just handed over to Becky.
I'll just scan her copy. You know, what I was asking was to strip.
There you go, bud.
Thank you. I just need to kill a couple more minutes here. Kevin, we're posted for town meeting? 6:45 town meeting?
Uh, get that out at 6:45.
I saw it on the agenda as listed. I don't know if it's formally posted yet.
I don't think we've done a formal posting yet, but it's, it'll happen tomorrow.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. We have it prepped.
All right. Very good. I'm not sure there's anything to do, but just wanted to be posted. All right. One of the things I saw in the packet was the request from the Town of Stowe to see if anybody wanted to perambulate the town boundaries with them.
Yes.
You plan to? Make sure they don't move the markers on us?
If you designate me as such, I can be the person. I know in years past, they've made it a big group event, and they've taken the old COA van out and made it a group exercise. But I don't think, you know, I'll leave that for discussion of the board. It does allow you to authorize a designee to do it, so.
Well, actually, I'm interested in doing it. I never have gotten to do that. I'd be happy to, but I just don't know if any other members want to be on the notified of when it is in case they want to do it. What is this? I don't think they've arranged a time.
They haven't, no.
What is it? A what?
It's where you walk the boundaries of the town to make sure that the markers are in place and there's no encroachment from foreign enemies.
Are we armed?
We can get an armed, armed escort. Yeah, it's a requirement by statute essentially that every seven years it'd be done unless agreed to do it sooner than that. And I don't know, we'll have to look at seeing when the last time we did it was.
It's been less than seven years. It's been fairly recent.
Yeah, because I know it was Mike Sullivan was here, so.
Yeah. This could be your only chance, Selectman DeSova.
I do enough walking. But I'll be happy to go and see where the markers are.
All right. So put, put two of us on the email list.
Okay.
All right. All right. So it's almost hearing time. Let me do the reading of the legal notice. And the legal notice is such that notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May 6, 2015, at 7:15 PM in the Michael J. Giannottis Meeting Room of the Maynard Town Building on the application for a change of manager at the Halfway Cafe, 51 Main Street, Maynard, Mass. in regard to their all alcoholic beverage license. Copy of the application is on file in the Municipal Services Licensing Division office. Signed by the Board of Selectmen. All right. So I'm going to call this hearing to order. And Kevin, if you want to do the introductions?
Yeah. The Halfway Cafe is proposing a change of manager. Give that form that for, yeah, okay. The board should have the Form 43 there for Mr. Jose Pena is the proposed manager for the change, currently is already working at the establishment. And it's just a basic change of management.
Okay.
Request.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, thank you.
You looking forward to being manager?
I am.
Excellent.
I'm already doing it, so.
All right. Well, good to be recognized by the ABCC.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything to tell us?
Enjoy Maynard. Hopefully it keeps going that way.
Good. That works fine. Can I ask the board members if they have any questions for you? Jason?
Uh, yeah. Actually, we've already had the opportunity to meet, and I've already heard some very good things from some of your employees. Can you give us a little background on you and your professional?
Sure. Well, I went to Johnson and Wales. I graduated 2001. Started off with a lot of hotels. Hilton Embassy Suites, Hilton Gardeners was my last one. I worked for Jasper White Summer Shack downtown and at the airport. And then recently before halfway, I worked for Besido Mexican Restaurant in Burlington. I opened that one. And then I also opened, I was the opening general manager for Besido in Chestnut Hill. I was working 90 hours a week and have a 16-month-old daughter and thought that was not my future. So applied for another job, and here we are, working less and loving my life, so.
Very good. Anything else, Jason?
Um, no, that's it.
Chris?
I'm good.
Tim, do you have any ideas for the business?
We are looking to see. I have a letter actually for the board, see if we could do four tables on our front sidewalk patio area, I guess, to seat anywhere from 12 to 16 people for outdoor seating during the three seasons that we can.
Oh, that will be an interesting discussion. Okay.
At least it's in the discussion.
All right. Anything else, Tim? All set? All right. Any questions from anybody in the audience? All right. Kevin, are there any comments from staff, police, anything?
No issues.
No issue. Very good. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the change of manager for the licensee Halfway Cafe, the new manager being Jose Pena, this being ABCC license number 067600022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. All right. Make a motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Hearing's closed.
Thank you very much.
Letter.
We can take that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jose.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. We just got to sign a few things, and we'll get going again. All right. Next up is the 129 Acton Street Development Agreement. And I got to admit, I'm a little confused by last-minute edits, but I'm sure somebody will explain it to me, and it'll all be good.
So, yeah, Mr. Chair, developers, Jim Fenton and Mike Jeanson, before us this evening, what you've received most recently was a few redline items after the developers had an opportunity to review the final changes we had made as discussed at our last Board of Selectmen's meeting. I had asked, had a conversation with Mr. Fenton, asked him to, some concerns that he had, I had asked him to provide a redlined version so that the board could consider the proposed counter to what was originally put forward. So that's what we have for you tonight. In addition, they've also provided a newly created Appendix C, which provides the delineation or sort of highlights the proposed sewer connection as well as the proposed sidewalks along Acton Street and up along the Easement Road of the, of the private property to Posel 95 of the rail trail. So that's what we have delineated on that Appendix C version as well.
Okay. Any comments on the redline?
Um, no. I think a lot of the requests are, seem to be reasonable and nothing of a major concern on the town.
Yeah. I mean, the biggest factual thing I see is, you know, on item nine, the, when the gateway sign goes in, and it's that last CO versus first CO.
Right.
Let me speak to that?
Yeah, if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
In reviewing that, the thing of it is, is that the rail trail's going out for bid this fall and for a spring start. And there's really, if I go up and put the, you know, the fancy thing, and we're not sure in case I got to move something or whatever up there, and I think the wording should have been that when the rail trail is, we'll do it when they do the rail trail, okay? Or on or before, you know, the last occupancy permit will be done. I mean, the occupancy permit's going to be basically, I have to do it to close on, on the unit. I'd just as soon do it now, but it doesn't make sense to do it now when they're going to tear, they're going to tear that whole intersection apart up there.
Yes.
In order to get the rail trail in. And actually, that's going to be one of the areas where they're going in and doing all the work from. So it doesn't make sense to do it now, you know. We just assumed, you know, I could do it now. That's no problem. But, you know, in a common sense environment, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense to do it before they put the rail trail in.
Ah, correct.
So basically, what I said is on or before, I mean, if they finish the rail trail by the fall, we'll get it right in. Because, I mean, I don't think we're going to have all the units done. There's no way. And, and, and as a, as a dead, you know, locked dead spot, it'll be the last occupancy permit, no matter what, it has to be done. I'd just as soon get it in, believe me. I'd just as soon get it in, get it over with. But it just doesn't make sense, because I know what they're going to do up there in that corner.
Yeah, I understand. My only issue is the definition of last, sort of, occupancy. Since this, this document runs with the land, you know, that could be 400 years from now. But, not that I really care that much about that particular piece, but if we do, just to tie it up, it probably should have the sooner of last CO and something else, like the opening of the rail trail or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. That's, that's, actually, that's the language I wanted in there, but I got all, somehow I got mixed up. I mean, it's like, it's like I said, I'd be more than happy to do it right now, once we get the approvals.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
But it just, it doesn't make sense.
And the rail trail's going to take a long time, and they're going to have it tore up for a while.
And usually, I think it's less than a year. So if they start in the spring, in the fall, it's possibly, if not that fall and spring, and there's no way we're going to be out of there by then either.
Yeah, okay. That's understandable.
Yeah, construction will commence spring of 16, so they'll, they'll be out of there. I think that language to that effect will, would make sense.
Okay.
Completion of...
I mean, basically, we'll have a lawsuit, because we have to do it. I mean, we have to do it before we get an occupancy permit. So we're going to do it to get the occupancy permit. But I don't even, it's not going to go that long.
So that was the only comment I had on the edits. Any of the other members have any further comments on the development agreement? All right. Let's see. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the development agreement between the Town of Maynard and Distinctive Acton Homes regarding the development of property at 129 Acton Street. And that agreement being the draft presented on May 6 with the amendment to Section 9 regarding the gateway sign. Do we have a second?
Second.
Make a motion a second. Any further discussion? Question from the audience? Okay, go ahead.
Question, Mr. Chairman, is that subject to rezoning?
Uh, I don't know.
Is indeed a development agreement if it doesn't pass the rezoning article?
Yeah, I think the development agreement ties with the article.
Well, actually, none of the development could happen without that rezoning. De facto, yes.
Yeah.
Just ask the question, that's all.
Yep. Good point.
Because I didn't hear anything mentioned about if proposals are rezoned, okay? Can't have a development agreement if the rezoning doesn't go through.
Correct.
That's what I'd like to point out. And there are people in town that are rather concerned about the fact that you're working on a development agreement prior to the rezoning. But that's your feeling, not mine.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. All in favor? All right. Motion passes four zero. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town meeting.
Good luck.
Uh, just a question. Do you know yet if planning board's going to invite you to speak at town meeting?
I got to get in touch with them, because I want to do a presentation. I'm going to have pictures there.
Yeah, okay.
Flowers for Vic.
Yep.
Okay. You going to bring the flowers?
Bring the flowers for what?
For the town meeting.
Oh, thanks.
Mike.
No?
Mike.
I may not even attend.
He'll be there.
Come on, I know you'll be there.
Send me this for the redline. Just maybe I'll be, we'll accept the change.
Monday night is favorite TV show.
This is a word. Ever send me, ever send me this version, because I only have it on, and we'll add in this section.
I won't.
Yeah, I can add it. I can send her, I can just change myself. I just want this so I don't...
I think they can't on my account.
Accept the change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, we have discussion of the DEP meeting that Andrew hosted. We have Chris here?
Chris is here.
Hey, we have Chris here. All right.
Hey, I didn't know you were coming. I got dressed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Andrew, what's next steps on DEP's side? Are they going to, like, have a write-up or something?
You know, I, I'm not sure. I think that the purpose of that meeting was to let people know that, that they had, they had already passed judgment on the questions that had come from some citizens. I don't believe there's any more decision-making to occur. I think it was an opportunity to get the word out in a more elaborate way than a letter would, would, would answer questions.
Okay.
I'm not expecting anything else from them.
So, so, so you think the DEP's out of the process? I mean...
Well, I don't know that we're waiting on them to send another letter to say...
No, but what I'm saying is, what, it sounded like you were saying that their involvement in the process is through now. Is that, is...
One of the citizens in the town had appealed to them to overturn a development decision, and that had been rejected.
Right.
And then this hearing, they requested that they have this, this public meeting and asked that the selectmen attend it.
Right. So, so we did.
Right. But my impression was that that was just to get the information out, so that everybody was on the same page.
Right.
There was no other reason for the meeting.
Right. So we attended, and we had, I don't know, there was 10 or 15 homeowners, property owners, and we heard about their troubles and their struggles with water in that area. What's the next step? Is there a next step? I mean, what, is the town obligated to do something, or we...
So, there's a couple of things. You know, there's undoubtedly high groundwater in that neighborhood. Some of that is a concern to the town. Some of that is a problem for property owners. And, you know, somewhere in between there, there's, you know, hopefully a resolution. But just because there's high groundwater doesn't necessarily require immediate and, and, you know, large-scale response from the community.
Well, I would agree with that, except that, and I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed as though, from everyone's standpoint, or everyone's opinion was, that at some point, there was an event that created the backup of the water and the lack of flow down to the river and all that that's creating the problems. That...
There were a lot of opinions about when it started, but I heard a lot of contradictory statements that night.
Yeah.
One thing I think that the town can and will likely be doing, and this could better be addressed to Mr. Ogrifer, but the INI-type work, where we put the cameras into the sewer lines and... the cameras into the, um, sewer lines and see where the problems are, um, that type of work was what the DEP was recommending be done on the existing drain, that some folks claim has a very low flow down to the river. Uh, other folks tell us that there is indeed a torrent there at different times. So, we're not sure, you know, what the right answers are, but if there's a blockage or a breakage in that drain pipe, and that can be identified, then we might have a, a relatively easy solution to the problem. But that's not gonna come from the DEP, that's gonna be our decision.
Okay.
Yeah, just to add to that, I mean, in several years' experience working with DEP and others have, have as well, but I've worked closely with DEP, they're, they're calming for that, and they're not gonna come in and fix, you know, provide our solutions and, and/or pay for it. What they will do is they'll provide guidance, um, and support when you get there, but, um, they, they may go back and look at a few key areas that they asked for specific addresses to look at, um, and provide resources on where we can go with grants and additional assessments, but, um, much of it's gonna become, it's, it's a local issue.
Okay.
So, short-term, are we advising residents with sump pumps to go into the river or their backyards?
Chris is gonna talk about it.
Well, yeah, I had three immediate action items to discuss, and one last DEP thing for Andrew. Um, have you looked at that grant stuff they gave you? I mean, it sounded like it was just study money, not doing-stuff money, but have you looked at that?
No, Linda Hansen and I were to meet on it and did not have the chance to, she was out yesterday, I had a full schedule today. Um, it probably won't get looked at by either of us until, uh, the first of the week.
Gotcha.
But it is, it is assessment money. It's, it's to make determinations, not to do any repair work or any, uh, what's the assessment funds?
Yeah, and I don't know if, I don't know if it's micro project or macro project or whatever.
I believe it was up to $30,000.
Yeah.
It's pretty macro. It's not very...
Probably need a few more zeros to solve as well.
Well, just for that neighborhood, or...
Well, yeah, just for the neighborhood.
Not very much.
Um, all right, so, to Tim's point about...
Just not to interrupt you, I think that award for that is early fall, too, so we're still in a, even if we go that route, we're still in a holding period potentially, one if we get an award, and seeing any money is, is around, I think, September or...
Yeah, but we, the application's due in May.
Right.
I believe it's due May 27th.
The award is this fall.
Yeah. Not positive of the due date, but it's not too far in the future.
All right, so...
Far enough that we could actually...
Sounds good, you and Linda will put something together?
We will.
All right. Um, so Tim's point on hookups and the, the video of the pipes, and then my other bullet point was bigger drains, so, um, Chris, can you talk about, um, people hooking up their sump pumps, uh, straight to the system? It sounded like some people have, and some people have permission to do it, and I think the general consensus is if it's legal and practical, we would let them. I mean, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, it's legal. I, I, um, when the, when the town, Uncle Engineer and I, we've been to this area, um, long before DEP should, should, and we've walked through the neighborhoods, especially when, during the period when the, the new property owner of, um, Orenta Delight came on, came in, came on to do some demolitions, that popped up, and so, we were, some residents said, quote, "Somebody told them that they could not tie in." Now, it might be possible that I was before my time, there was, but there's no record or nobody's, at least I know of, who made that. And we advised them that they could, that because it's some, the water is coming out, and because of some of the issues in the area, uh, I won't have a problem there tying into the, into our storm drain. When DEP came on, came on board to see me, uh, before the public hearing, um, they also agreed with us, they, I told them the same thing I'm telling the board, I, but I didn't know that they made a petition. I also didn't know that the public hearing was scheduled until that Friday before the public hearing, I got a call from DEP, they, they were scared to see me. But having, as Andrew said, knowing that the hearing was just basically to satisfy the public, it wasn't to make any decision, they were not questioning the decision of the town in terms of the development. We also, um, have gone back there since after that to talk to a couple of homeowners on Hayes and Arthur, asking them to, their, their sump pumps are working very well, asking them if they are willing to come together and they want to tie into our drain. Uh, we will entertain that, and I would like to sit down with them and get their take on it, but at, um, except that the town authorizes me, um, the funding will not come from Public Works, because I don't have the funding. I also told them that, um, the big, the best source they could go to would be to come before the board and request for, uh, hardship. The board can authorize us to do the tying, but I don't think at my, that I don't have a legal standing to pay such bill, but that in terms of their tying to our system, uh, I would recommend it. I also told them that we, that would not eliminate 100% their problem, that the problem has been, uh, the fact that regardless of the fact they have...
Yeah, yeah, let's back up a little bit.
Sure.
Let's take this in pieces. Short answer is, if they want to hook into the sewer, or it's okay with you, or the storm drain, if they with you, sump pumps to the storm drain, that's okay with you.
It's okay with me, Mr. Chairman.
So, there's the issue of how that happens?
Yes.
And who pays for it?
Who pays for it?
I, I thought it was actually, you know, the homeowner pays for it, cause that's how they, that's how they're talking about it.
Many of them were complaining, Mr. Chairman, that they don't have the money, it's a time problem. Part of it is because of different, uh, information they've been hearing for years, some make up their own information, they think there's some, something wrong with the pipes, they, the coverts, nothing wrong with the coverts.
Hey, hey, stick, stick to the issue.
But, but, so, yes, hook up.
Stick to the issue.
Yes.
Hook up, sump pump?
Yes.
Storm drains?
Yes.
Okay by you?
Yes.
All right, and I'm fine if they wanna pay for it.
Yes.
But physically, how do they do that? They come to your office, they fill out something, they give you plans?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they will, they will, with the contract, they hire, they hire a contractor. The contractor, eh, right now, is a very cheap fee they're gonna pay to the town, who has the contractor to pay, um, fee of, for impacting on the town, right of where he's gonna trench permit, things like that, which is, which is not expensive, $100. Um, then we will also make sure that it's a licensed, um, contractor doing the job, and then they will give us, we'll request for a sketch or a drawing, just to make sure that they're doing the right thing, and then we give them permit, they tie into our, they will do inspection to make sure that it's tying properly, and, um, they will go from there. This way, the, there, there are sump pump, at least, well, right now, they, because of the way they're pumping, it goes back to their own system, so it helps them to alleviate some of their problems. Uh, then I also added to that, that, uh, it does, they should not expect that it's gonna solve the problem 100%.
Yeah, 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 but I'm only interested in hooking up sump pumps. If somebody wants to do it, it's fine with you.
Correct.
They'll have to pay for it, but they can do it.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, um, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments about sump pump hookups to the storm, storm?
How are we gonna get this communication out specifically to the people who are here? Just a public announcement and hope they see it, or...
Uh, the, the board can authorize us, we can put it on the town website, we can put it on my, in my office or in the town administration.
There's also a record of folks that attended, they were gonna list it from, um, DEP as well.
Yeah, I would think of, of the attendees, the one or two who are most interested, soon everybody would know.
Yes.
The Butters List was generated based on the known problem, so we can use that as...
Well, we have an attendee list, right, or DEP?
Well, that, that, you know, some people may not have attended, but may, may have had a problem, but couldn't attend that night or something. So, there were more people that we notified than, than showed up.
Okay, so what are you suggesting? You're suggesting direct notification of all the Butters?
I'm saying that, you know, how, well, Mr. Egan's request was for, how will we notify them? We have a, a Butters List, I would suggest we direct mail that a Butters List, whatever solution we're, we're willing to offer them, it's the same group of people.
So, if everybody decides to tie in, does that create a problem for us?
We would take a look at it, but I don't think so. We have a drain in those areas, we have catch basins, it depends on, um, the locations, but some of them are already tied in.
Well, and I'm not making light, I'm not making light of their, their problems, but if you, if you were to hear what they were saying the other night, you know, is, they've got enough water to flood the, flood the river.
Yeah, we, what would do...
The concern is that if we, if everybody that's there that has the problem decides they're gonna take the town up on the, um, opportunity to tie in at this time, does that create a problem for the system?
Uh, we will investigate him, Mr. Chairman, even if it, if it requires, we, for example, this recommendation is just that for, is a way of, the board, in my view, uh, having mercy on these people, and so we try to do this, but then if it becomes a matter where the pipe we have right now on the street cannot hold the volume, that's one of the reasons why we will, uh, take it, we'll investigate it based on how many requests, and then they are, they are, we, we also get, for them, for now, we, I will not be able to tell the board yes or no, but I, we will look at that impact. Uh, the impact will, may require we changing the pipes, that's also a cost, but then, those, those are the things we investigate.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the concern, is, the concern is, um, if, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if, if it comes to that point, isn't it too late, once they've already tied in? I mean, we wanna, don't we wanna know that there's gonna be a problem before everybody starts pumping their water into the, the storm drains?
Well, we know, that's why they will contact us, they won't just go and enter.
No, but what I'm saying is, if you have to increase the pipe size, if you have to make any of these changes, I mean, we ought to be doing that before they tie in, if, if it's, if it's a possibility that we have to.
I doubt that it may be a problem. We have about 10, in that area, we have about 10 12-inch pipe, uh, but again, I don't know how many who, individuals for now, who wants to tie in. So, if we, so it'd be, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be, I will not be giving the board a good information if I tell the board, let's change all the sizes of the pipes, because we don't know, because the, the, the flow we have right now in those areas, and the surface water that we collect, they are, we have not got a point where there is a problem because of our pipe size. So, we think the flow will fine, but if somehow we find a place where, uh, because of some reason, we have a smaller pipe, maybe 8-inch, or some defect, we'll be able to, to know. I have not investigated to that point.
Okay, I was just kinda playing with the worst-case scenario for us in the room, that, you know, we'd say, "You can tie in," and then we have to explain to the rest of the town how we, uh, had to dig up three streets and put a pipe from point A to point B.
Usually, it's a small pipe from the house.
Yeah.
It's a service pipe.
Right, no, I know that.
4-inch small, 6-inch, so it's not gonna be a big volume, um...
Okay. I'm gonna quote you. It's part of that analysis, too, we need to, we need to do a, on the, uh, on the influence that's coming in, that it's clean and okay to come into the, the system as well. So, each of the, each of those individuals that are going to be requesting the, the permission to tie in, we need to do an analysis of the individual homes to determine that...
Now, some of the...
What's involved with that?
I don't know.
Is it a wire sample, or is it...
I, I think it's, I mean, to some degree, it's, it's probably mostly visible stuff, um, you know, just to determine, I mean, I've seen...
Is that something Chris just does?
Yeah.
Is that somebody else?
Within the, within in-house, probably part of the DPW in-house analysis looking at, yeah, it, it comes to mind, we've seen others where they've had, they've had sump pumps, um, for instance, Jiffy Lube, which did tie directly into, um, our storm drain years ago, and, you know, at the same time, it's, it's a sump pump, it's pumping water, it's also in, in an oil basin.
Yes.
And it was pumping directly into the, uh...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so those type of issues, um...
Investigate after.
We can confirm, and I think the, the few that are tied in just did it on their own. The others, I don't think it was a DPW issue, like you said even before you, it was because they hired professional contractors that knew what they were doing, and knew that they couldn't tie into the system, so they told the homeowner, "It's illegal to do it, and you can't do it." Not so much DPW saying that. But I think without doing it, um, we're not getting anywhere, you know, it, it, everything that, that they pump out onto the, onto the property is coming back into the home, so it's definitely a first step to some solution to help alleviate the amount of water flow.
Second, Mr. Chairman, the board will not make a blanket approval, in my view, just because this is, the board having, trying to have a, um, what I, for lack of a better word, mercy on these individuals. That's why we have to take each case by case and do the investigation, make sure that all they are pumping is all just groundwater.
Yeah, well, that's, that's something you do, right? You're not bringing those to us each time, right?
Yes, we do that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay. So, let's talk about bullet item number two, trying to figure out what's going on in the pipes, I don't know, you run DI, you run video, what do we know about the pipes?
The, Mr. Chairman, the, the pipes on Hayes Street and some of the, um, the areas we're talking about, INI issues very common because of decent water, but that is not the, but that's not their, their concern, their concern is the covert. The covert looks good, uh, the last time we...
Well, my concern is the whole pipe down to the river. So, what do we know about the pipe? Have we run a camera through it in the past?
So, we, I, I discussed with the town administrator that if, if I'm given permission, I would like to run a pipe and camera through the whole pipes. Um, at the time, we had the, the individual who took over the, um, Orenta Delight, the new owner, while he was going through the process, stormwater requirements from conservation, he, he, he did, he, he camered his section. I was thinking that they will, um, could have advised him to go beyond his property line, but, um, I don't think they had a legal standing to do that, but I was not...
So, what's, what section's been camered?
Yeah, but right now, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
What section has been camered?
The, the, aside from, uh, on Wartham, the Orenta Delight premises.
Just the one parcel?
Yes, one parcel.
The one parcel that's being built.
So, that was required by stormwater, uh, conservation, but I talked with the town administrator this morning, uh, and I, I tried to, he has, I agreed that it'd be a good idea for us to, to TV, uh, the whole length of pipes, uh, just to confirm what we know, because we did a visual inspection, but visual inspection cannot go too far, and then, and also that will give, uh, the public some sense of, uh, what, what, in terms of the covert, uh, so...
Okay, so when, when will that be happening?
It really should be the first step.
Mr. Chairman, I, as soon as the board agrees with me, I'll do that. I will begin, tomorrow begin to schedule that.
Okay by me, what about you guys?
Sounds like the proper step.
Jason, is there a limit of work for the camera? I don't know how far you started, I assume you go all the way to the river, but I don't know where you start.
Probably all the way to, to Glenwood Cemetery, probably, uh, that's...
Oh, really?
Yes. Because the, all the water coming from the cemetery and behind the cemetery all goes through that channel, and it goes through the covert to, to the river.
Right, you're looking at, okay, so...
Downstream of the covert.
I mean, you're, you're looking at where it enters the culvert on Hayes.
Yes, on Hayes, yeah.
Not the Glenwood Cemetery, that's another 3,000 feet.
Correct, yeah.
So...
Okay.
Uh, you know, you're talking about Hayes and McKinley, help me out, it's about there, and we're gonna go down to at least Douglas.
Yes, we should go up to Douglas, in my view.
Where we hit the hill, in which case, should be good. Uh, to me, I, I mean, pardon me, but I, I mean, this is something I've been looking at now for a year, and we have a developer who chose to, you know, was looking to tie into our system, but do no inspection to verify that he wasn't causing a detriment. Now, that was handled a different way, uh, actually, no, it wasn't, I was thinking about Actually, no, it wasn't, I was thinking about it, he is tying into the stormwater system. So it's not a legal standing for him whether or not he can do it. He should have been obligated to do it to make sure that his stormwater was not causing an additional problem. And in that case, he could have been asked to storm to to look at that storm drain all the way down to Douglas, all the way to the river. So it seems like we've missed the boat on that one.
Okay, and that normally, that directive doesn't come from CONSCOM, right? That's from.
That would come from CONSCOM, CONSCOM's the Stormwater Authority.
Oh, yeah, right.
It's not, it's not, Mr. Chairman, it's a conservation.
I mean, the other, the other piece of that, yeah, in Maynard, they are the Stormwater Authority.
Yeah.
It could vary, varies obviously by community, you can choose who your stormwater authority is. But, yeah, I mean, my takeaway from the meeting with DEP was that that looking at, looking to make sure that, simple things, looking to make sure catch basins are actually functioning, you know, that that looking at connection of a storm drain, getting an idea of what the pipe actually looks like, were all first steps.
Right, I think I think we're we're in consensus that our first step is the video, right? So that tells us what the pipes are and look like, right?
Correct.
So what, how do you do the check that the drains work?
We are, we have already looked at some of them.
And some of them, Mr. Chairman, like the Hayes, we is part of the I and I, we've looked at that, we have some work to do on Hayes and, but on this big cover, we have not looked at it with camera. Part of it has has been done, which I alluded to the.
Yeah, 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 all right. So we're good on the camera, you're going to do the camera?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And the only question is, when will it be done?
Mr. Chairman, I will begin tomorrow to call our vendor and then schedule it, schedule it as soon as possible.
I mean, does it take a long time or?
No, it just timeframe for the vendor, because this is a period where most of them are busy with various.
What kind of what kind of expense is that, do you know?
Yeah, it it's going to be expensive because camera and they have to also give us a report.
Well, I guess.
About a dollar a foot, Chris.
I guess the point in asking is to Jason's point, if it's something that, you know, the town of Maynard's Conservation Commission, who's in charge of that water.
Yes.
Flow, if it's something that we should have been looking at before we allowed them to tear the building down and and tap in and all these other things, it's just another issue where we we're kind of missing the boat on certain things because we're not, you know, not following through on things that should be standard.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will not be able to, I don't know how the conservation was thinking, but I know in my side discussion or sidebar with Linda, the we talked about it because, as I said, when the on-call engineer and myself, we've been to those areas, we've we are aware of the issues in the area. But public works don't have a legal standing to ask the owner to do that.
Right, but I understand that, my my point is necessarily directed at you, my point is directed to those of us here and those two guys there, is that if we're going to if we're going to continue to see these problems, are we going to have to look at the same thing in, you know, 129 Acton Street, Parker Street, if the mill goes and adds, you know, more water flow because of something, everywhere that everywhere that something like this takes place in every development, we run the same risk, do we not, Jason? I mean, from, you know, it's your specialty. I mean, is it something that we should be looking at every time and make part of somebody's part of the procedure, part of the process to get a permit to build?
I would developers would do that if the authority in charge, in this case, stormwater, asks them during the process of findings to that they would like them to do from A to B. I don't see any developer who will not comply, just like in any other issues that come before any any board, be it planning, and they are required to meet certain, I think many, many developers would do that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I just, it's just that if these things keep popping up where, things that should be part of the process and aren't throughout that entire process.
Some of them may not necessarily be their their, the new developer's problem, but because he wants to be a good neighbor and he wants to meet some requirements of the board, I don't see why they would not be able to do it. It's part of doing business.
I'm a good neighbor, I help my my neighbor when it snows, I use my snowblower on his driveway, but my concern is that the town, the town, you know, the town, the wastewater system and all that stuff isn't compromised every time someone starts a big project. That's my concern.
It is, it does get reviewed. I mean, when it goes to CONSCOM, they they do stormwater impacts and they they do review, so it's not like, it's not.
To be clear, this particular case of tying into the drain system directly is actually a mitigation.
Yes.
Because they didn't ordinarily, this new development would not be permitted to put additional stormwater into the system beyond what was already going in. Therefore, the fact they didn't want them to put it right into the ground and have it go right into everybody's basement, this is sort of a different animal. But that said, if I could real quick, Kevin, if we do, to Bill's point, we do this, we go out, we look at the pipe, is this all eligible, I assume, for our MS4 permit? Do we get credit for this?
Yeah.
And then therefore, we could also use that to somewhat offset cost?
Yeah, I think so. I could talk to Wayne more about that, but yeah, I think I think it would be credible for that.
We're only talking a few thousand, right?
You're talking, yeah.
I don't wonder if it's.
However many feet.
If it's, you know, it's probably about a dollar a foot.
Yeah.
Yes.
Give or take.
Well, I don't think we're even talking a thousand.
So if you're talking maybe.
Two thousand would be a lot.
You're probably looking at about a day's worth of work, it's probably about $2,200, $2,500.
Yeah, I got you.
With a report and a C V, B V D.
Yes.
It's probably two grand.
I don't really understand the discussion of the permit funding, but I was, my question was going to be, is there like a stormwater fee fund that would be a source to pay for this?
That would be the right source, Mr. Chairman, if we have money, stormwater.
I figure, I know we've talked about it, I don't remember if it ever got established.
Yeah, you mean as a utility?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be all.
But we haven't done that yet.
That's a huge, that's a big conversation that we really do need to have, especially as the MS4 requirements are coming down the pipe are pretty significant.
Okay, but it sounds like you got a plan to make this this video.
Yeah, I think I think definitely, I mean, initial phase stuff that we probably should have already done, needless to say, I mean, is what it is, but there's a lot of things that just by doing some of these fairly low economic costs and can result in some pretty pretty big picture stuff, if, you know, if there's an issue with the line or what, we can answer a lot of questions by doing these.
I'm betting on issue with the lines.
Yeah.
That's just.
Could be. But, yeah, again, just residents, we're talking 1920s, I mean, it didn't happen overnight either. So we're, you know, to be fair, we're trying to trying to address it proactively, but it was just kind of, it wasn't until the Oriental Delight demolition and new construction did this really become a huge spotlighted event.
Yeah, that may have been the straw that broke the camel's back on that watershed, you know.
When you turned off the two biggest pumps keeping the groundwater down, then.
It came back up.
There you go.
Um, okay, so.
Hookups, yes.
Camera, yes. And then your point, Jason, about doing the simple check on the drains and stuff?
Yeah.
And my point.
That that could be done, though honestly, that can be done, I, Chris and Wayne have already been out there in the rain, you just, you go out in the rain, you look at the basins and you go over to the corner of Waltham and Walcott and you watch, when the paving was done five or six years ago, that they paved behind the basin, the water goes right behind the basin and misses it. It's it's little stuff like that, it really is, and it's, you know, a couple of bucks worth of asphalt could, you know, get more of the system online.
Yeah, do you think, is there a conversation that needs to happen with the property that's asphalted the entire backyard that runs where that drain, is that a low point?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's low. Did they used to have a drain that they covered up?
Yeah, that that used to be, I mean, they added in the impervious, you know, that was just, they, I think they were running a business out of it.
It was.
Oh, so you're talking like putting in a French drain or something?
Yeah, well, the impact that when they put all that asphalt and I think has, you know, exacerbated at least on Mr. Hall's property potentially.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't know what the recourse is there, that was, that was all done with, you know, presumably through various boards.
Right.
And that was permitted.
Well, I mean, I'd be interested to know if that, you know, would help.
Yeah.
And it's a different discussion to determine how to make it happen, but I don't even know yet if.
I think that's the level of detail that potentially that grant assessment would identify.
I got you.
From DEP.
And I'm, you know, the only thing I have observed is, you know, the the drains at the low point on Waltham Street at Hayes, you know, on a big storm, it gets pretty deep there. So in my simple mind, it's just like bigger drains, but I don't know if that's doable or not.
So I think it was DEP who also felt to your, to that point, said, you know, is it just the water can't make it in to the system? Do you need two ba- two basins, two grates instead of one grate? Or, you know, there's there's just a lot of that, a lot of that type of observational stuff that could be done, and it doesn't really cost us anything.
Uh huh.
Until it comes time to change it or fix it, or then it costs.
And so, Chris, that sort of work is underway? Is it in any formal, being done in a formal manner?
Not in this location. The, but part of it, like Hayes, was done on the I and I study, the first year study, which shows that a lot of a lot of infiltration means that, and so we know that the, because of the locations. But in terms of the remedy, it's one of the areas that we will be looking into as the board is has given us some money, so we're waiting for the time timing to.
Right, but yeah, let's let's keep, these are separate items.
But this but this issue that we're discussing is is different from the I and I issue. So this this is a separate one because this covers a particular area in depth.
Right, but it sounds like you get to stand around in the rain a lot and look at it, right?
Yes, we have, and then we also have.
Make notes in a very formalized manner and then that will provide some options.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board? Any other questions about next steps? Sounds like we have a couple next steps and there'll probably be ones after that, too, but let's start with the first ones first. Kevin?
No, I'm good.
You're good, Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
All right, next up on the agenda, item number nine, the town meeting articles. There's a couple of things I want to accomplish with this discussion and maybe some other things you guys want to accomplish. One is I want to have the board vote on recommendations for all the articles, each of the articles rather, like FinCom does, just make sure that we're all on the same But then there's also the issue with the finance committee comments, and I think we got a hard copy handed out this evening of those. And I was at their meeting yesterday, and they voted not to recommend one article. But there was also another discussion that I'd like to bring up to the board regarding our article on special town meeting, Article Eight, the purchase of real property. And they had pointed out that, you know, there's a couple of community downtown enhancement funds, a general one and a stabilization fund. And we had not used any of that money to go towards the purchase of that property. And so I'm suggesting to the board that we actually take the $40,000 or so that's in the downtown stabilization fund and close out that fund and use that towards the article and then use, fund the rest of that article with the general stabilization, capital stabilization money that we had originally talked about. So I'm curious if anybody has any thoughts on that suggestion.
Can you tell me, I know we have two downtown enhancement funds.
So one is a community stabilization fund, which is a stabilization fund, which requires a two-thirds vote by town meeting. The other one is a downtown enhancement fund, which is accessible at any time that the board can authorize expenditures out of. The stabilization fund was, stabilization fund was set up with prior projects that we had gotten money from from various projects. We have spent out, I think we we expended about $60,000. After we created, it was created with $100,000, we did expend like 60 for other projects. It just hasn't, it's been several years since we've spent anything out of that. The downtown, the enhancement funds is not something that I think we want to be spending anything out of at this point. It's to Bill's recommendation with the meter money, that that's where the the funds from that, that we set up in free cash will be going into that account. That account, I hope, because it'll be much more accessible, the Economic Development Committee is preparing a recommendation on how to access it, there's some funds that they're looking to utilize on their project, and that's where that money would be coming from. Stabilization, I don't know what the intent is, I don't even, you know, I don't really know. Makes perfect, good sense used to to just use it up for this project.
I mean, I I'd say I remember, you know, back 10 years ago or whatever, when we first got it, you know, we got some money from developers to do various mitigation downtown when they got permission to build their projects, and we parked it in that account and it happened to be created as a stabilization account. And then somehow a second account got created some years later for slightly different.
I was just looking to see what the available balance as of, as of March 31st, it was 40,000, 4002 dot oh one, so we have 40,000 even essentially for to close that out that we could contribute that to. You know, that way, you know, we're only hitting the, and that, if that was the case, we'd only be hitting the capital stabilization for the 260 instead of the 3.
And I think the money is, it's sort of the intent of that fund.
Right.
And I'd much rather it just be one downtown fund than two.
Yeah, it's very confusing, even for residents that in committees that are looking at it and like, which one is which and how do we get money from it? There's a lot of confusion over the stabilization versus the the other fund.
What's the, what's the name of the stabilization fund? You know the exact name?
It's listed as community, the stabilization one's listed as community enhancement stabilization.
So any other thoughts, Tim, Chris?
On that, no.
All right. So that being the case, I want to make a motion that we use the remaining balance in the community enhancement stabilization fund as one of the, as the initial funding for special town meeting, Article Eight. So basically, I'm just saying that gets all used up and then we use the the other funding source that we've already talked about. We have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's, um.
Yep.
We already, have we already not chosen a source for that?
No, we have, we said 300,000 from general stable, capital stabilization.
Does that change the article?
Not the total amount. Yeah, it'll have to be moved differently with a with a different funding, that's why we need to actually have a formal motion on it.
Okay.
Although, we got this reserved, so, well, that's reserved.
No, it's this.
One special.
It's this one.
You want S A, special one, whatever that is. It's the same amount of money, it's 300,000. But yeah, so the article will be moved slightly differently.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Motion passes for is through.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chair, the Fin, Finance Committee recommended it as is currently though, right? That was just a suggestion.
They did, they had, you know, I had brought it up, the idea to them, and they thought it was a good idea to bring to the full board.
Okay, so they were supportive of the.
Yes.
Article.
They wanted to act on what was in front of them, just to get it done.
Okay, so to be clear, they were in favor of it in either.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the one article they did not recommend was special town meeting, Article Six, I believe, the CPA Reserve Appropriation, the one that gives money to all of various projects. And they had a hangup with two projects, and I sent you the application information on those two projects, one being a $30,000 study for Memorial Park and the other being our $14,000 amount to put in a display cabinet in the lobby. And they were fully supportive of the rest of the articles and the rest of the projects, it's just those two particular ones, they thought it was a little, not terribly cost-effective use of taxpayer money.
But their reasoning just doesn't fly with me, I don't understand why they chose what they chose, because these are too legitimate. I've had side conversations about these and I didn't get any feedback.
I've had side conversations about these and I didn't get any feedback or response back. So I'm curious what you might have heard from the FinCom about why they specifically chose these two.
Um, the general consensus was for Memorial Park, it was like $30,000 to study what? I mean, it's a tiny little park. If I had $30,000, I'd do something, not study it.
Well, a little history on that one is, this was actually one of the most proactive applications they had. It was the first group to get together with various individuals who used the park and see what they can do to make it bigger, if they can make it bigger, make it better aesthetically pleasing for the town and just make it usable for the foreseeable future. It wasn't, I mean, FinCom thought they were going to try to expand it and that's all they were going to do with it. So I know they redid a little bit the memorial. But just to come back and say that, knowing that all that, that effort went in before giving second chances to other people, that just doesn't sit well with me.
I think the biggest thing was the $30,000 for the study. You know, I think, you know, if it was a $3,000 study or $10,000.
That's not a big chunk of change compared to what else went through. That's nothing. And the 14 grand for the, to let people share a bit of history of Maynard and preserve those artifacts, I don't know why they, they don't think that's a good idea either.
Well, in regards to the cabinet, they had issue with the, you know, the cost of the cabinet itself was just, the display cabinet for 12.5 or something.
Okay.
And they had a, they had an issue with, it seems like a lot of money.
For the 12.5 for the cabinet was the issue?
Yeah.
To preserve these artifacts that need the special treatment?
Well.
That's essentially why the cabinet was like that, because it, the material is, to make sure everything's preserved, that's the key for this, the preservation of the items themselves.
Well, the information they had didn't, didn't talk to that at all.
And I shared that with them, so.
Well.
That kind of irked me a little bit.
You may have shared it with individuals, but you didn't share it with the committee as a whole because you weren't there on Monday night when they were discussing it. But you will have another chance, if you're the advocate for the article from that committee, you know, their hear, their hearing is next Monday. And so that's the time where all this happens. So it'll be good to see.
So essentially, if they say no to it, it's not going to stop the article from going to the vote?
Oh, it'll go to the vote, sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that these points are made and raised so that we don't nix it now, but we can't, so.
Oh, no, nothing is nixed. You know, it's going to get moved the way it can get moved and maybe it passes with amendments or without amendments.
I just think some, some of their reasoning is just, didn't make sense to me, but.
Well, to, to, to his point, if you read what's in front of you, it doesn't say anything about a special cabinet with special materials to preserve different things. It just says cabinet, 12,000, 12,500. You gonna need 12,500 cabinets in your house? And if you look at, if you look what they gave them, if you look at what somebody gave the finance committee, it's in front of us, here's what it says, quotation, display case.
To, to be fair. Is that all they received, was that? They didn't receive anything?
No, there's some other stuff, but it doesn't say the things that you said.
They received the application packet, yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know.
If it's a cabinet, I don't think they would even put it through.
Mr. Chairman, isn't the CPC, the group that put forth the approved, like, they're the ones who vetted all the detail of the application?
Yeah.
So if, if the FinCom didn't receive all that detail, I imagine there's pages and pages of detail about the rail trail easements that were also being funded by the CPC application. That all didn't go to FinCom?
FinCom had a pretty big packet of stuff that they had requested from the committee. So, you know, I was watching them go through it all and, you know.
I'm just.
It seemed that they had requested information and they had received information and I acted on the information received.
Did they request anybody from CPC come and speak?
Uh, I don't think so.
Provide context beyond what's on.
Yeah, but I mean, the chance there is at the, at the FinCom hearing on next Monday. So I'm just bringing it up for them, I mean.
After they've already adopted their recommendations?
Well, they can change. That, that happens a lot, but.
Well, the fact that they didn't make it onto the warrant to begin with, it's still time.
Yeah, we've already printed 200, I mean, it's required to be given, not verbally, says nothing about verbally, it's required to be in print. So we're not going to wait till a few days before town meeting to start printing the recommendations that they put together, because they have to be handed out with the warrants as soon as folks come in. Prior to the meeting. And they are available on the town website right now, you know, as effective after.
The recommendations?
Recommendations, yeah.
Just an aside, I couldn't find the special town meeting warrant on the website.
I've seen it there.
I've only seen the annual.
I'll have to look, they both should be up.
Well, they certainly weren't next to each other. Maybe they were in two different places, but I didn't see the special there.
Yeah, if you were looking at, like, recent posts, they was sent separately, obviously, because one was approved a week, you know, a couple of weeks prior, so.
I was looking at the town meeting page.
The town meeting page didn't have.
Town meeting page didn't show it.
All right, well.
A little weird.
If it's not, we'll make sure it is.
Okay. In regards to Board of Selectmen articles and the recommendations they're for, um, I just want to be able to answer the question at town meeting, whether the Board of Selectmen recommends articles. And, you know, we put, we accept them, we put our own on there, but that doesn't necessarily mean we recommend them, so. Yeah.
We have one more meeting before we do it?
No. No.
Well, we got to do it now. I was going to say, I was going to give Dave a chance, but he's not here.
And I was just going to do this, I was going to try to do this quickly as possible and, yeah, just as with the annual, uh, I'd just like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend all articles sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. That would be my motion.
I would second that motion.
Do you have any further discussion? All in favor? All right, good. We like what we're doing. Now, there's other articles there. Does anybody have any issues or questions with the other articles on the annual warrant? Or would it be okay if I made a motion for the rest of them together? Anybody want to take any separately?
Would you mind running through them real quick? I just don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, we have the optional additional exemptions sponsored by the Board of Assessors. We have the FinCom Reserve Fund sponsored by the Finance Committee. And we have the Community Preservation Fund Budget Fiscal Year 2016 sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. And that's different than the FinCom discussion we just had, that's a different article.
I don't have any other issue with those articles.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Annual Town Meeting Article Six, Nine, and Ten. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that passes. On the special town meeting, I'll make a recommendation that the, well, actually, is there anything on the Board of Selectmen articles that you want to address separately? Or is it okay if I make a motion for all of them on the special town meeting warrant? All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Articles, Special Town Meeting Article One, Two, Three, Eight, and Nine, those being the articles sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, um, and does anybody want to take any of the other ones separately? Are you okay with a motion undoing the remaining four together? They being water retained earnings from DPW, sewer retained earnings from DPW, the Community Preservation Fund Reserve that we just were talking about, and the Acton Street zoning designation change by planning board.
Okay with them all together?
Yes, is it okay if we do them all again?
We have to vote, don't we?
Yes, but we need to vote separately, one at a time if you want. All right.
Okay, as a group?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Special Town Meeting Articles Four, Five, Six, and Seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we got that housekeeping item out of the way. Now, before we go to Article Ten, Kevin, I got a quick question for you. The, yesterday's election was the vote on the charter. Does that mean the new charter's in effect today, or is there some sort of?
July 1.
July 1?
Yes. Effective July 1.
What was the result of the vote on the charter?
It passed, yeah, well, it was counted.
Yeah, did you get what that was?
I didn't, I was mostly interested in the neck and neck raises going on around town.
Yeah, I got some of those numbers. I didn't see, I, I don't know. I can get it, I'll get it from.
379 to, looks like a something seven, 67 article.
Yeah. So pass. Overwhelming support. Okay, um, Item 10, the discussion of a butter list requirements. There's a memo in the packet talking about a butter list requirements for liquor licenses, planning board, cons comm, and ZBA, I guess. And I had brought this issue up a while back about, you know, the differences in them. And the one that strikes me the most is the liquor license, which is basically, the butter list is whoever is next door and not across the street, whereas planning board's everybody within 300 feet, ZBA's everybody within 300 feet, and conservation is everything within 100 feet most of the time. So my suggestion is that we may want to look at the liquor license regulations and, and expand the butter notification to something more typical of planning board and ZBA, move it over to the 300 feet. Just seems odd that it's such a narrow definition of a butter that somebody across the street from a new liquor license wouldn't even be given notice. But do we have any other thoughts from the board on that? Jason?
Was this part of, I know this specific comment was not necessarily, but I know the EDC was looking at the liquor license regulations. Has this been floated by them?
No, I don't think they saw any, they didn't raise any concerns with it.
Yeah, our charge to them was impact on businesses and hindrances to businesses. I'm not sure they would have looked at them.
Well, but sometimes, not, not that it ever happens in Maynard, but occasionally you have abutters who don't want new things going in, so.
No.
When it comes to hindrance.
Oh, Lord. Well, I hadn't thought of it that way. And plus, actually, the butter list costs like a buck a, a buck or something, and, you know, there's probably $10 in mailing costs, so you're right, there is a cost.
Not that, not that, you know, if you're across the street, that shouldn't necessarily disqualify you as an abutter, but I don't know if it needs to be, you know, 300 feet, which is, you know, 40, chapter 48 statute for planning board.
Well, I was actually wondering if it might be, you know, 300 feet for new licenses and new locations, first as a change of manager. And these being all local regulations, we can pretty much do whatever we want. Any thoughts, Chris? I guess my concern is, you know, a brand new restaurant pops up across the street and gets a liquor license and.
I'm assuming it's a brand new license. It's going to be, it's going to be in a downtown setting or in a business setting. I don't know, it's not going to be across the street from your house or from, I mean, I.
Well, actually, it will be at 129 Parker Street, for one. It happens a lot, because we have a very tight line. You know, fixed place got a liquor license, then, you know, there'd be neighbors across the street who wouldn't be notified.
Yeah, we can go down and look at our roses and get drunk, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a concern about it personally.
Okay. Tim?
Nope.
Nope, what? Nope, you don't have?
I don't have any.
Comments or concerns?
No comments on the one.
Would you mind if it was changed? Do you mind if it's not changed?
As Chris was saying, I just, it doesn't, I feel like Parker Street's kind of irrelevant right now with the abutter thing, but.
Well, it's not Parker Street, it's just, it's the municipal regulations in general. It was not site-specific, I'm just citing a couple of examples where it might have happened, but. So you're okay with, with liquor license notifications being only the immediate abutters on that side of the street?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I guess we're done with that conversation, that's fine. Let's move on to Agenda Item 11, consultant contract renewals, and we have a list in our packet, I believe. And the board has a policy of, of evaluating contracts six months prior to renewals and I'm a proponent of. It's one of those policies that we don't do a good job of doing.
Not in the last six years, I would say.
But it's one of those last policies. And in my mind, I'm also a proponent of the best practice of, you know, making sure that all contracts are renewed every three or four years, just to get the most benefit out of consultants, because, you know, being a consultant myself, I know that, you know, when you have to recompete, it does make you pay a little better attention to your client at times. So there is some benefits to the town if we made sure that contracts were rebid every so often. But those are my initial comments. Just curious what the comments from the rest of the board are regarding consultant contracts and how we might approach renewals.
You're talking, just to clarification, contracts that are under the Board of Selectmen's purview?
Um, I don't know, you know, actually, I don't know what the policy is, actually, whether it applies to all of them or not. I kind of forget. I'm not even sure I was on the board when the policy was created.
I, I'm not familiar with the policy, but aside from that, there's several contracts that, you know, aren't under the board's purview just based on dollar value, that, you know, that fall into the town administrator's office purview or specific departments.
Do we have, can we get a copy of the, the policy at some point? The written policy, just to kind of, so we know, I mean, is it, it exists, so we know what we're talking about, because.
Yeah, be honest and see.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to argue with you or anybody else in the room, but in, in real terms, if, I understand where it says who the signatory is, but in, in real terms, it's all under us in that, you know, that's kind of the job you sign up for. Not to say that you would take somebody's responsibility away from them, but in, in the real, in the real terms, in the real sense, when someone starts to complain or scream and yell, they want to know what the selectmen are going to do about it, they don't want to know what anyone else is going to do about it, so there's really nothing that's not, on some level, our responsibility up here. What do you agree?
Oh, I agree, and I'm pretty sure that's what the policy was, but.
But I just, I just want to read the policy, because I'm not familiar with it, just, just to take a look. I'm not, I mean, I don't see a problem with anything that's on the list, but just, it'd be interesting to read the policy as well.
Agreed. Yeah, and I would reiterate that.
More good reading from the town of Maynard, but.
Tim, you got any comments?
I do not.
Jason?
Yeah, I'd like to see the policy. I'm just looking, I was just taking a quick gander if it was in the, the BOs policies that were provided to the subcommittee. And I'm not seeing anything.
No, that's not really, that's not really the same thing.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I'd like to see the policy, but. Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I'd like to see the policy before I decide to, you know, potentially interject where, where, you know, we have our, our staff is dealing with these consultants one-on-one every day, and I would hope that if they're not getting what they want out of them, that we're not letting them hang around anyway.
Mm-hmm. All right. Well, somewhere in the, somewhere when the period when Nate Bobnadeau was...
On the board, it was done, so.
All right, so let's see what we can find on that. So Becky, you gonna go digging?
I'm digging tomorrow.
All right. Do a big document search for the last seven years or whatever. It's in there somewhere.
Make sure the violation of the town shall...
Is that, I mean, this looks like a short list, not, you know, it just seems like, you know, not questioning whether it's accurate, it just seems like a small list for, you know, all the different things that we have going on, it's just...
I thought it was a big list.
Really?
It's Sultan vendor, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean...
I mean, I suppose it's, it's not, not everyone has a contract, I guess, too, so, no worries.
Yeah. Actually, when I asked for the list, the vendor stuff didn't even occur to me, because I'm pretty sure the policy wasn't regarding vendors.
There's also, you gotta, what you gotta take into consideration is 30B status, and you mentioned bid, there's some we've never bid, because they're exempt from 30B. The town never bid on solid waste recycling service till I put it out to bid, four years ago, so...
Well, see, there's a point of why you want to do it sometimes, I guess, huh?
Yeah, sometimes it makes sense, absolutely.
Good stuff to know.
But, yeah, like, my point to that is they're not all required to be put out to bid. There's some exemptions in there.
Gotcha.
It's much different than the vendor, the vendor stuff, we put out an RFP, we're taking, we're taking the low bid, salt's salt. The other stuff isn't, is black and white.
Yeah, the other stuff, what is the other, the other stuff is legal personnel and...
We've felt the wrath of low bid consultants.
Oh, IT and engineering and stuff, yeah.
That's not always the right answer.
Well, it's not, I'm not saying you do low bid, I mean, it's just...
I'm just saying, we need to be conscientious.
RFQ or RFP or something, but...
Just conscientious about our consultants and vendors, and not just...
Keep them on their toes. Keep them responsive, I don't know, but... All right, so let's find out what the policy said. That'll be good.
Well, I mean, in now almost a year, I think I've heard about various policies, and more times than not, when we talk about them, half the room has a puzzled look on their face.
Yep.
You know, I think, would it be good if we could get all of these old policies together into one place?
Just overlooked it three times.
Yes, Mr. Board of Selectmen Clerk. That would be an excellent idea, since you're in charge of records, current and past.
Current, yes. Past.
So that would be an excellent project. Thank you for volunteering.
Sam's catchpiece, and that sounds like a little professional.
I'm sure we have it somewhere, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just, we hear about various policies, I'm just, that was, oh, it was a policy from, you know, Bob Nadeau, but where is it? Where is it recorded?
It was a policy from his time, it was a board policy.
Okay, I won't, I won't skewer Bob on it.
Call him up. Yeah, have him check his old email, I'm sure it's in there.
Well, I would hope it'd be somewhere else beside Bob's email.
Yes.
If it's a Board of Selectmen policy.
Well, as I said, you're clerk, so you can be in charge of that.
These 2009, so we'll look and dig it up.
Yeah.
Is there actually a policy book?
Yeah, there's a policy.
Get the red meter policy in there?
Probably.
All right, exciting stuff. I was gonna send it to Andrew, but he forgot. Okay, anything else on the topic?
No.
All right. We did the golf course contract approval. All right, so I guess that moves us up to Item 13, the economic development updates.
I'll be brief on my updates, not a lot since our last meeting. Economic Development Committee met with the Clock Tower Place Tenant Association, the head of that group, and did hear some positive reports of recent changes under the Saracen operation and management.
Just a quick question. A, there is such a thing?
Yes.
B, is it a new thing?
It's been in existence, they, they kind of, my understanding is they did, it's been established for a while, but it's been ramped up more recently in the last year and a half because of some of the issues that tenants have had with the building management, and it still sort of exists as a tenant association, but I think now it's, it seems to be kind of, there's still a little bit of a focus to that, but I think it's, they're now looking at how they can use that tenant association for networking, and networking with tenants that are in there, and tenants as they come in as a networking opportunity more than, you know, we need this or this, you know, demand type of stuff. But yeah, no, it's still, it's still, it does exist, and it's not new, and they're still operational, but I could see that morphing into, you know, something more when they have a much stronger onsite presence from a management company. So that was good, just, you know, to pick their brain, and, you know, they hashed over some of the issues that, you know, they faced when they were there with the prior property manager, but moved along since then, and had good things to say, as I said, about Saracen, so that was a positive feedback. EDC also is prepared to host a Saracen community presentation on the mill concept. That's actually tentatively scheduled now for Thursday evening of June 11th, which will be after the planned presentation to the Board of Selectmen of June 2nd. Planning to present to, to the board here on June 2nd as a guest, and then they're looking to do an advertised public presentation at the library. It's still tentative, I'm still trying to confirm with the library that the space is available and open, but as of now, we're looking at Thursday, June 11th. There was conversation about a Saturday thing. It caused some, some issues. There was also the Saturday we were looking to do, it was also a high school graduation, created some other stuff that was raised, so they prefer to just do it on the evening. Thursday evenings seem to be the best as far as other committed meetings, so that's what we're aiming for, so we'll lock that in so they can start to do some outreach when we get closer to that. That's really it on the economic development.
Okay. Town administrator report.
TA report, liquor license bill, H3192, will be up for public hearing next week on May 12th. It'll be before the Committee on Consumer Protection, and we heard from Representative Kate Hogan's office yesterday with regards to that, and they'll be looking for potentially some written testimony to the Committee on Consumer Protection. Kate stated that there was no need to attend in person. We offered, and she didn't think it was a good idea or needed, so...
Were we offering written testimony?
That is moving forward, yeah, that's still open. We can submit to the Chair of the Committee on Consumer Protection. So now, again, now we're starting to see some, some action and movement on, on those home rule petitions as we're, as they're established, the budget, state budget pieces move, it's by, what, 10, 11 days, I guess now, so they're starting to pick up on some of this stuff, so it's good to see. Attended the annual emergency response plan update from EverSource, the former Insta, it's an annual thing, the emergency management, get together with them, and some updates on storm notifications and their, on their end, what procedures will be. Also, a review of the individual town's critical infrastructure and some of those contacts. Also attended the MEMA applicant briefing for the January 26th, 28th Blizzard. As I mentioned in prior meetings, the federal government approved the storm period from the January 26th to 28th, which is far less than what we initially submitted in our initial disaster assessment, but what we came out of the applicant briefing is that they don't consider the, the snow roof removal as part of that period, that they're looking at several weeks beyond the actual initial storm, so that, that actually is a huge cost for all of, you know, the municipal and school roofs that have been paid out of that. So I think it, it'll grow to a bigger number than what I was thinking was just that time period. We're still capturing where the biggest bang, our buck is in that 48-hour window, but it was nice to hear that they're gonna open it up to the, the roof emergency protective measures, so that clearing of the roofs and all that, we should be able to get reimbursement back for as well, so that was good news.
Roughly, what are we talking about on the...
The initial...
Are we talking like a third back or something?
It's 75% back on what they deem as reimbursable, so the initial disaster assessment that we had was about $700,000 that we submitted, but that was really like a 14-day period. We now have to go back, because they haven't asked for that. We have to now go back and start to crunch numbers on a 48-hour period, which is really that January 26th to 28th, and then the, the roof stuff separate. So it's still a good chunk of that, of that $700,000 happened with those measures, but, you know, there's entire winter of, of issues, so...
We can have that number for town meeting? Or relatively close? I need to say something while I present the article, I need to...
Oh, okay, yeah, then I can get something.
Give me a 50% number or whatever.
FEMA, I mean, I'll be meeting with a public assistance rep once they do an initial kickoff. Once they do the kickoff, we have 60 days to provide with stuff, and there's a, there's a whole turnaround time clock that goes, but then they have, they utilize what they call project worksheets, and individual project worksheets will get done during that period, and then the approval then goes off to beyond the public assistance specialists, so they may or may not, they may chip away at some stuff, but generally, it's been pretty, pretty accurate with what's been submitted on the project worksheets as reimbursable, because we are working with the FEMA folks, so they know if something in there is kind of screwy that would never get approved. At that point, they will then approve what's reimbursable, and then the town would receive 75% of that. The funds come into, into the state, into MEMA, and the contract is with the state, not with the federal government, so we would then get 75%, but once that all gets going, it's fairly, it's usually fairly quick. But I can have, I can have a pretty good number of what we're hoping to get reimbursed by then, certainly.
Yeah, doesn't have to be exactly, you know, low end of your comfortable range.
That'll be fine. Also met with Saracen Properties regarding the rail trail easements, further discussion with them on the, they have two permanent and two temporary easements that we need to obtain related to their property. They wanted to better understand, myself and Linda Hansen, as well as engineer from GPI who's working on the project, to better understand what impact it would be on their parking spaces and et cetera, so we went through that, they felt very comfortable with what was presented. I don't see any issues with it, they're, they're very, very receptive to the rail trail. The CEO is an avid bicyclist and absolutely sees this as a must for the town and for their project, so we were comfortable with that meeting and all that, we just gotta button up a couple of things, and we should get that easement, all that easement stuff resolved with Clock Tower. This is the two, there's easements right at the site, but there's also easements up by the, up at the, kind of on the bank of Winter Street, along the, up at the river there. By the dam, yeah. So they, you know, they wanted to better understand what that meant, they still want to be able to access the, the control, you know, of that, to control the water and...
Kevin, were part of the easements to the Clock Tower property, part of the agreement that we had with Clock Tower at the time of their zoning change?
Yes, they're all invalid.
They're all invalid?
Yeah, because it happened in October of 2011. Had it happened, I think, there's a cutoff date like in 2013 that they would still be credible, but because it was pre, you know, it was prior to certain federal requirements that came down, you have to go through the whole process over again.
Okay. Did we know that, like...
No, 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 this was...
I know we didn't know it at the time. When did we learn that, that they would be invalid?
Right. At the time, we thought it was our...
When did we learn that they would be invalid?
Oh, when, right after, within the last year, when the final, we got back on the tip in the approval, they came out with some new stuff, that's right around the same time we learned that we couldn't have any communication with property owners, was the same time that they said, oh, by the way, unless you have it already done and recorded, it's no, it's not good, it's not valid. We, I mean, we had other agreements theoretically with John Anderson's property that were never, you know, that weren't recorded easements in the deed, so none of that was ever done at that point, so we kind of lost anything that we had already agreed to and negotiated prior to that timeframe. I don't anticipate, they have that development agreement, I made sure that was, I mean, that was highlighted months ago in my first meeting with them, just to let them know that the prior owners were willing to do it. At that time, we couldn't speak to any, you know, we had to kind of play it the way we needed to, but they've been aware of it, that it was in the development agreement, and I don't think, again, I don't think...
They're not gonna look for any compensation?
No, I don't anticipate any, any issues. As I said, the, they're all about the project and the rail trail, so they just wanted to better understand the impacts, because they're, as they're planning, they're planning pedestrian walkways and access on the other side of the parking lot, which is going to encroach into their parking lot, from the Mill Pond side, so they wanted to better understand how much is getting encroached from Main Street into their lot, and then from the Mill Pond, they want to make sure they can maintain parking, and all that's gonna be lost from parking spaces is two, which will be from the ADA access ramp that'll come into their lot, and that wasn't imperative for the project, we could pull that out if they were adamant against losing those spots, but they see that as a benefit, because it's access now into their property from Main Street there, too. So they don't want to do that, and it all went well, so we should be able to wrap that up by the, you know, certainly by the end of the month, hopefully. Fire negotiations with the union have kicked off, they're underway. You know, as we get closer, as we get a few negotiations, we'll probably set up an executive session with the board to kind of give sort of status updates of where things are at, but we're very early in the process at this point, and so just in the future on the radar. I'm just glad it's one, soon to be two, then four, is what we had last year, so... And on the facility side, custodial discussions are still continuing. That group that's been working on that consolidation is hoping to have an MOA in place soon and present something to both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. That's all I have on TEA updates. Anything you want to add?
That's it. Okay. Chair's report. One thing I noticed as I was going through the agenda, and I totally spaced it, we were gonna talk about our municipal property naming policy, and I failed to put it on the agenda, even though it's in the packet, so, next time. Sorry, Chris?
I'll live.
All right. And then, question for Jason. Are we okay with, for the subcommittee meeting next week to discuss water rates with Chris Ogrifer?
I received them at 6:02 tonight. I will put them in drop box.
Oh, but he's, he's okay to be there?
He didn't indicate, I haven't even read the email, I just saw it came in.
Okay.
So I will check with him and get back to you.
All right, so for the rest of the board, that next Tuesday at the subcommittee meeting, we're gonna have Chris in to talk about the water and sewer fees, actually, the, that he had talked about before, connection fees and street opening fees and things like that.
What's next Tuesday?
The 12th. And one of the other things I have is...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, what time was that at?
Oh, actually, we haven't posted, I was assuming it was gonna be...
It's the same, so just to...
I was only expecting it to be 6.
That left, that made it off my list, but just to reiterate, we're closing at 4:00 PM on the 12th, it's been advertised and publicized out there, closing for customer service and some specific training during that timeframe. Also, that... service and some specific training during that timeframe. Also, that evening at 7:00 is the, which you should have been invited to, is the meeting with the moderator and other folks. No?
Haven't seen anything.
No, none of you would have been invited.
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Verazan's been really mean to me lately, because I have...
No, that's strange. Yeah, I don't know. Becky sent out invites a couple of weeks ago, because she coordinated it with both Jim Coleman and Dick. We'll both be in attendance as will the planning board chair and yourself.
Wow, that would be pretty cool. Okay. All right. Well, I'll discuss with...
She just left, but I don't know. Maybe she forgot you.
I'll coordinate with Chris and Jason.
Dick, PETA, Jim, Michelle.
But no Bill.
I think she left you off.
Man!
Yeah, I don't know what happened there.
All right. Just because I got voted out of office doesn't mean I don't get invited to the party.
Proper annual town meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 12th, from 7:00 to 7:30. She must have, I don't know. But you should have been on that. And same with planning board, the planning board chair as well.
All right. We'll work that out. Thank you. All right. The only other thing I had was, any update from the Board of Assessors on their evaluation of the Sudbury tax thing?
Um...
They've been working on that a while, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, I know it was discussed, I think, at their last meeting. I don't know the status of it. I don't know where it's at. Had a conversation with Angie, I think, before their meeting, and they were going to be discussing it, looking at it some more. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'll get a status report on it.
Okay. Be nice to get some information rather than just studying it to death. Okay.
Yeah. I don't know when they'll have that.
All right. And I guess the last thing, the last, last thing is slides for the articles?
Yeah, that's all. They're all prepped.
Okay.
In the basic form. They don't have any detail around any, you know, no photos or specifics. But they are, they're prepped for the articles with the motions and the slides and everything.
So we can take our set and...
Yeah.
And to that point, Kevin, other than early evening next Tuesday, is your calendar open for next week, just to sort of have a half hour to...
Yeah, maybe, David, if you're available Monday before the hearing, if you're around, I'll be here.
Oh, yeah.
Might be an option. I'll look at my schedule. Tuesday is tight.
Put that on my calendar.
I think Tuesday and Thursday next week are tight with stuff going on. But definitely Monday, I'll be here that evening.
Yeah, I could be bothering you with questions like, what number do I put on this bullet?
Yeah. I mean, I could do even, David, I could do Tuesday night at 7:30 after...
I'll give you a call.
After the...
I'll call you.
The prep meeting.
And just a summary to the board members. So coordinate with Kevin on doing your slides and getting all the information you need to present and be able to answer questions from town meeting, or point to the right person to answer the questions if they come from town meeting. And...
I think, Bill, if I may, it's also important, especially for people who haven't been through the cycle before, that hearing that the FinCom has next Monday is extremely important. And a lot of the questions that typically come up at town, if I've already said this...
Yep. Well, we had a little, we had, we touched on it a little bit, and Tim's pumped up, and he's going to be there, and it's going to be very exciting.
All right. Okay. So then, it's, it's an important hearing, because it's when the questions that typically get asked at town meeting get asked anyway. So, all right, sorry.
It very much simplifies things to hear the questions, even if you have no answer for it on the Monday FinCom hearing.
Monday, the 11th.
My town meeting, you would do, yeah. So if you've got a complex article that you think, you know, there might be some questions on it, it's not a bad idea to check out that.
What time is it?
Seven o'clock.
Seven PM.
Put it on the horn, yeah. And if you plan not to go to town meeting, please tell me, because in the past, some members have made it a habit of not going, but...
You're not going to town meeting?
No, I'm going, but...
No, so people haven't gone to town meeting?
Yeah. And it's worse if they bug out without doing their article prep. So it's a little unfair to town meeting for the rest of us to pick it up last minute. So if something comes up, just let me know. We'll take care of it. But, all right. So that's...
No, I can't believe that someone would not go to town meeting at this election. I can't believe that.
Well, historically, there's always been one or two in every, it's really odd. I agree with you, but...
I can't, I'm shocked.
But anyway. Okay, so next up is what we now call board member reports, because apparently we can't say new, old business.
Old, new, new, old.
We're not allowed to do that anymore on an agenda?
Yeah. Old, new, but you're supposed to list out anything that's not reasonably anticipated.
It is reasonable.
Is reasonable.
Yeah.
Is reasonably anticipated.
Yeah. You'd be pretty good. All right.
Comes from, yeah.
All right. So...
All the terminology.
I prefer the old, you know, around the horn term. I always liked that one. But anyways, let's start with Tim.
CPC met tonight, so I plan on getting updates from them and informing them on FinCom. Hopefully, they have representatives there.
And by the way, congratulations on your...
Oh, thank you. And congratulations to all the other people on the ballot. Terrence?
Yep. I was just going to congratulate Tim, Terrence, who's here, and the rest of the people that won the local town elections yesterday. Good luck to them all, all of them. And then, do we get, do we get town audit reports, like, you know, this, you know, like the written ones?
Yeah.
Do we get a copy of those? Can we get a copy?
It's coming soon, right?
Yeah, like now. Typically, usually by the, usually the end of May, we have, yeah, they provide it with the management letter and everything. I've got a nice one ready to go for you.
Oh, nice.
One for each board member, yeah.
One for everybody?
And actually, I kind of think of it, I believe there's ones from last year, because for some reason, they were never handed out last year. So if you really want that one, you can ask Becky. I believe she has a stash.
I'm sure. That was it.
Is there something you were anticipating?
No, I just like reading those type of things, you know?
Are they green? I always like them when they're green.
I don't know if that's some sort of therapy or what, but...
Chris ran out of stuff from Bill Nemzner, dude.
I haven't been downstairs with Mr. Nemzner for a while, so I ran out of reading material.
Additional binder material?
Nope. I got plenty of, I still got two books I haven't even been able to open that he gave me. But no, that's it for me.
All right.
Actually, I have these PDFs.
Yes. Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you for stopping by.
Yes. I would also like to echo my colleagues' comments. Congratulations, Terrence. Congratulations, Tim. Look forward to next year. One thing, I don't know if it's been brought up. We need to talk about Kevin's performance review report. And I don't know if you've brought that up at all.
I did not. I was going to get that all together before I brought it up. But yes, you are correct.
And it would be best that we complete the process prior to July 1st.
Correct. Yes. So just as a recap for the board members, the board's selectman does an annual review of the town administrator, and there is a formal policy in process that is well documented. And I'll get that stuff posted on Dropbox, and we'll talk more about it, the logistics about it at the next meeting.
C+.
That is all. Oh, also, just thank you to the DPW and Kevin and to Andrew, all who played a role in working with the soccer group to get some quick repairs done for them down at Rockland Ave. There was some follow-up, not only on the field, I guess they got three quarters of the field, is what I understand, is playable.
Right.
You know, they're still not fully operational. But also, there were some concerns about the roadway, and Kevin addressed it very quickly for them, where the road was really causing problems to people trying to get down to the field. But it's been addressed. And the point I made to Kevin was, let's make that part of the regular maintenance and routine for the DPW, so it gets done sort of fairly regularly. But that's it. So thank you guys for...
Did we give them a lock for the fence, for the gate?
Yeah.
I don't know who has the key, but...
They worked it out.
But thank you to Andrew and Kevin. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I know that the soccer people are very appreciative as well. That's it.
Thank you. Jason?
A couple of quick items. One, there was some very disappointing news about Open Table.
Oh, yeah.
That will no longer be in the Clock Tower Cafe due to some, I guess, some negotiations with the new tenant, the new landlord. I think, just in general, and I think this has been stated before, but any group using space over there should be, you know, talking with them to determine whether that's going to continue, or we need to find some new places for some folks.
Yeah, just to that point, the Historical Society is the other really last one that's there that has any kind of town connection. And they've fully agreed to provide space for the Historical Society for what they need. So I'm making that connection with Historical Society folks, because they haven't reached out to Saracen at all. And there hasn't been any communication. But they are well aware of it, and they don't have any concerns at all with them staying. The other one was just an operational...
I understand that that's a, because of the kitchen use and things like that. It's sort of a special case, but it's still, I find it pretty disappointing.
I would agree. It's a public service that the town has, and now that, and it's not only mained residents that are affected, it's regional residents that are affected. And that's a social program that we have, that now we need to find. There is a need. I think they have, I think I've heard 100 families...
More than 100 the night that I attended with Senator Eldridge.
And it's, it's something that we should concern ourselves.
So we're trying to work with them to come up with other solutions, you know, to allow it, but...
Just a little history on that. I didn't recall that they were in Clock Tower. They outgrew the church space? Is that what happened? And they moved over to Clock Tower a few years back?
I don't know what, yeah, they've been at Clock Tower for several years, and certainly since the renovation of the cafeteria and kitchen space. I don't know what moved them, but they have been there for several years and have operated with two other operators. But the operation is changing. The way it currently is, was being utilized was through Next Steine, and prior to that was Courier &amp; Chives. The new operation is going to serve as more of a much all-day type of commissary prep for other locations. And it's just a totally different operation. But yeah, I don't know why they left the church operating piece.
So it's not really a logistical issue with the owners of the property. It's the food service tenant.
Correct.
Or food service contractor.
And I don't, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, I know they've coexisted with others. But if I'm coming into the operation, they have legitimate concerns, especially when it comes to not only inventory and stock, but when it comes to food permits, using the same equipment, who's responsible for cleaning and maintenance. And, you know, it definitely can create challenges. And if you're coming into a space paying good dollar for it, you know, I think they have some legitimate arguments coming in as a tenant. But at the same, same token, I agree, David. I mean, it's a, it's a community event. They're looking to do what they can, they can do. They've offered to cater and provide all of the food for the next few events, just to, you know, as a in-between. Saracen has offered to do that. But they'll, certainly the long-term solution for them, they didn't, they tried to make it work, but it just, they couldn't do it. So it's unfortunate.
Congregational, the one across from Serendipity.
Yeah, Union Congregational, which is where, you know, we thought they would be a good fit.
I also thought they moved around for a while. Occasionally, they'd have it in Acton.
They had it in Concord or Acton. I'm not sure. I mean, the biggest draw, I think, is mained residents, so it's open to, you know, the other communities. But we'll do what we can on our end to help them.
Next item, where we stand with the two liquor license holders, whose time ends June 30th?
Guys, take my question.
Have we sent, are we sending, I mean, it's the beginning of May, so is there a final written warning going out as a reminder, or have we already done that?
There'll be, there'll be a letter to appear at our first meeting in June, for one. The other, I don't, you know, I don't know if any communication really is necessary prior to then. They've signed a written agreement that they'll surrender the license, so...
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that they're very well aware of what's coming up, so no one can say, you know what, I forgot.
Yeah.
Nope, sorry.
Yeah, he did that the last time he was here for a couple of meetings and never remembered.
Yeah.
And we have the sidewalk issue that isn't done yet. How's that guy doing?
I have not seen any work started.
That's six or seven weeks left.
That was, that resolves itself July 1st in the form of a, yeah, a daily liquidated damage. So I'm less concerned about that one.
Yes, there is, there is daily damages. So...
That was impressive.
Yes.
Good connections.
And just lastly, to echo fellow members, congratulations, Tim, Terrence, all the other folks, win or lose, who ran yesterday. Look forward to working with everybody. That's it, Bill.
And thank you to everybody who voted yesterday, all 575.
Was that what it was?
Something like that.
About 7:30, my precinct was at 128, so...
It seemed like there was a lot of ones that just didn't castle.
Hey, there was no line, so...
Yeah. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you all.
Wow. Yeah, don't see...